This form will be filmed for later viewing, so this is planned to be run on YouTube and various channels. The League is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens and government. The League neither endorses candidates nor supports political parties. We welcome all citizens of voting age to our membership. So this evening, we will be talking to candidates that are running for city council at large of the city of Detroit. Our moderator for this evening is Deborah Bunkley, who will outline the format for this evening and introduce the candidates. Deborah?
Thank you, my name is Deborah Bunkley. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters of Detroit. The format was received by each candidate prior to the forum. I would like to introduce the lead members, that would be serving as producer, question sorters, timer, and question gatherers. Producer, this is Janet President. Question sorters, this is Janine. Rambo. Question gatherers are John and Belle. And our timekeeper is Gordon and David. The candidates for city council is John Cromer, David Rambo, and Janine. Each candidate has the opportunity to make an opening statement, not exceed two minutes. The order has been determined by drawing lots just prior to this meeting. The timer will hold up a card that demonstrates 30 seconds remaining. And a time in a card indicates stop when time is expired. Okay, following their opening statements, the candidates will answer any written questions from the audience. These questions may be addressed to specific candidates, or maybe to all candidates. The question gatherers will circulate through the audience with cards and pencils. They will pick up written questions and deliver them to the question sorter. The sorter will review them for redundancy and for slanderous content. As moderator, I have reserved the right to close discussion on any question. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have the opportunity to make a two-minute closing statement and reverse order of the opening statement. I remind you that there are no comments from the floor during the forum, and as said, the audience refrain from applauding to the end of the floor. No props, visual aids, or electronic devices may be used on the opening.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is John Crawmer, John Wesley Crawmer Jr., and I am a candidate for Detroit City Council at Large. I've decided to run for city council because I believe that I am a product of the city of Detroit, in terms of some of the things that you hear about us. I am what people call an returning citizen, or ex-offender. I did time in prison. I did 13 years in prison for stealing a pair of gym shoes and a set of bed sheets, retail fraud. I've been home since 2004. Since I've been home from prison, I placed thousands of people into job opportunities. I have the documents to prove it, any candidate anyone wants to see it. I had the documents, their phone number, the last four digits of their social security numbers, and their names, and things like that. I feel honored to be able to stand before you because I think I have what it takes to help knock those barriers out of the way for employment and self-sufficiency for the many families that are suffering in our city because they have family members who cannot get a job to financially contribute to their families. You can hear other people talk about they want to help us get a job and stay out of trouble, but I've never gotten a phone call from anyone that says, "Hey, Mr. Cromer, I hear you can help ex-offenders get jobs. Can you help us do A, B, C, D?" None of that has ever happened in this city, from anybody. The people that I was working for came from New York. I have the skills, I have the talent to put people to work. I hope that you will Google me. The president called me a good example of what is possible. If you go to YouTube and put my name in the search bar, you will see those videos, the work that I've been doing in this community, and I want to continue that work as your city council member. Thank you.
Right, my name is David Rambo, and I will remain seated at the microphone, if that is all right with you. Is this the only one? That's better? My name is David Rambo. I'm a candidate at large, a write-in candidate at large for Detroit City Council. First, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this event. I wish folk were a little closer in, because I think intimacy in terms of distance is very important. But I think it is very important to have these kinds of conferences, forums, in particular at the library. I'm a regular visitor to the library, and the library is one of the most important institutions in this city for all the people here, for you, your family, adults, and children. It is the place where information is lodged, I mean, it is the central place where information is lodged in this area that has, as such, free access to the citizens of Detroit. All of the other areas of information and education, including the Detroit City Council, are frankly closed institutions. So I think it is important for the library to have this, and for you to be involved here at the library. Now, I'm a regular visitor here, and I hope that you are a regular visitor at libraries in your community. What I think is a central issue in terms of this city, and for that matter, should be...
30 seconds remaining.
Sure, for this city council, is the organizing of black people in terms of the pursuit of their interests. By and large, Detroit City Council, and for that matter, all of our elected officials refuse to account for the realistic problems that black people are facing in any area, be it communications, education, political affairs, business, or economics. And if you want a fuller description of my involvement in it, you can seek our website, Concept East Institute on Facebook dot com. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Janay Ayers, and I am currently serving as your Detroit City Councilwoman in the at-large position. Some things that you should know about me that I think are important. Over the last 18 months, I have thoroughly enjoyed the opportunity to represent each and every one of you in your interest, as well as the developers, as well as the small business owners, everyone. One of the highlights of the last 18 months has been the creation of the city's first task force on returning citizens. And that leads me to give you a little bit more background about myself. I have been an educator in Detroit Public Schools. I have worked for the city in the Recreation Department for eight years. I've been a mortgage banker, and most recently, I come from labor, where I represented 160,000 working families every day. So I recognize being thoughtful, being pragmatic, and being no-nonsense is so important and vital to our success as a city. My mother is a 30-year retiree from DPS, and so I grew up with an educator for a mother. So if anybody else has experienced that, you know how that is. And on the other side of that, my father is a multi-filming, and that has shaped the person that I am. And so I stand before you as a representation of your circumstances do not define your outcome. So, again, my name is Janay Ayers, and I am your at-large councilwoman. Thank you very much.
Okay, we will now move to the written questions from the audience. There are question gatherers in the aisles that would be happy to take their questions to the sorters. For questions directed at all candidates, each has up to one minute to respond. For any questions that are directed to a particular candidate, they will have 90 seconds to respond. The other candidates have the option to respond to the same question, and have up to one minute to do so. Okay, we'll start as a sort of starting with Mr. John. What qualifies you for this office?
What qualifies me for the office?
What qualifies you for this office?
Excuse me, sir. I got it, thank you. What qualifies me for the office is that I'm a Detroit resident, I'm over the age of 18 years old, I'm a registered voter, and I had to collect 500 signatures from Detroit residents in order to get onto the ballot, and I collected over that amount to make sure that I had enough. I think it was somewhere in the 757 of them. I turned, and that qualifies me to be a city council member. There are no education requirements or those type of things to be a city council member. Had, if there were, we'll have a different type of conversation.
Mr. Rambo? What qualifies you for this office?
I've lived in this city my entire life, and as you can see, I'm an elder senior citizen. I'm a lifelong student, and am prepared to deal with your issues, your issues, as you present them, and advocate for you as a citizen, as a resident of this city. I've been the host of For My People, TV program on Channel 50 for the last 46 years, and we have, week after week, dealt with issues of this community. In addition, on our website, Concept East Institute on Facebook dot com, we have 23 sites, and I'm the editor, who publishes them. So that on verse for any topic that you present, or I need a research or analysis, I present it to be of service to you.
Right, I'm not going to have you repeat it.
Okay, thank you.
What I think makes me qualify for this position is the fact that I have been serving my entire life. To be a councilperson means that you have to be willing to be a public servant, and that is what I've been doing my entire career. I had an opportunity to leave Detroit after I came, graduated from college, and I did not take that, because I recognized that if everybody continued to exit from Detroit, what did that leave here for us? And so, I've had real jobs. I've had jobs I didn't want to do. I have a background just like everybody else. 60% of the people in the city of Detroit come from households headed by women. And so I recognize the daily struggle. I am pragmatic, I am no-nonsense, and I'm very thoughtful and thorough. And I'm really good at building relationships, which I've done over the last 18 months. And so those things qualify me to serve you in your best interest.
For our next question, we'll start with Mr. Rambo. What are your views on Detroit insurance?
Detroit what?
Insurance.
Insurance. Can people understand me without the mic? Good. Insurance. Insurance is a crucial part of the economic system that is overall, in its entirety, surrounds your entire lives, okay? Insurance is just one part of that. Banking, savings, economic investment, employment, all of these interact with each other. And the problem, and the central problem in the city of Detroit is that a certain segment of this population is disadvantaged structurally, structurally, from participating in the economic development of the people in this community, be it in insurance, in banking, in employment, in savings, investment, any area that you wish to describe. So it is important for a councilperson, or any candidate, to articulate an analysis of an understanding of the economic system that folk face in this community.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Ayers?
It's no secret that insurance is a problem in the city of Detroit. I pay insurance just like everybody else, and I've seen my insurance over the last month go through the roof, by $150, but yet my driving record hasn't changed. So, the reality is that on the city municipal level, we can't make the change to it. But we have to have relationships with those folks that are on the state level, and that is something that I do have. I have relationships with our senators, with our representatives on both sides of the party line, in order for us to really have an authentic conversation about what this looks like. It's a disenfranchisement, most certainly. We all know about redlining, it's there. We have to push people forward, and then we have to be active in the voting process to get the folks in the places that we need them to be. So, continue to build those partnerships so that we can address these issues.
Rebuttal?
Can I answer the question?
You can. You have 30 seconds.
I thought it was 60 seconds to answer a question. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I've learned how to do that now. Anyhow, I think that insurance, the way that insurance rates are now, are causing our citizens to become criminals. It's forcing them to drive without insurance, and as soon as they're pulled over by the police, they're now a criminal, driving with no insurance, and then they have all these other costs. Well, if we can't fight the insurance companies to get the rates down, then maybe the court systems can do something to help alleviate some of these costs that are incurred by people that are trying to, as our colleague said, struggle. I don't believe in struggling. Struggling means that you're used to the pain that you're in. It is my job as a council member to relieve you of that pain. That's why I made the city of Detroit take the criminal record question off some of the job applications, to give people a second chance. Thank you.
Rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Let me say this very clearly. Detroit City Council and the mayor, but mostly the city council, has been, at least over the last 50 years, going to Lansing or trying to go to Lansing to negotiate, to change the insurance rates and redlining. It will not happen, and you have to understand why. If you understand the economic system in this country, and particularly in this city, someone has to pay the penalty. And so the penalties of government policy are dumped on poor people, and specifically, black people. So, city council people can go till they're blue in the face for the next 100 years, and it will not happen. Irma Henderson, as a city council person, decades ago, talked about that. Other city council people have done it. It is a chronic waste of time, and it is a waste of time because, clearly, it is designed, the economic system is designed to hurt people, poor people, and black people, and those people are in the main, living in this city.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Ayers? Your question would be, please explain the goals and development of returning cities.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Please explain the goals and development of returning cities.
Returning cities?
Yes, citizens. Citizens, I'm sorry.
All right, so the question is...
Returning citizens.
All right, so why is it important? Is that really what the gist of this question is?
I like the way it's written.
Yeah, exactly. So, right now, in the city of Detroit, we have almost 200 people that return home every month. And we are not offering the best second chance that is available. At the end of the day, I formed the Returning Citizens Task Force to approach things in a holistic perspective. It is one thing to give someone a job, it is one thing to give them a trainer and send them on their way, but you need to have life lessons, financial literacy. There may be behavioral and mental issues that we need to address, and so that is what the task force does. We set people up with ways to actually live, because I believe that if given a second chance, that person, now with wraparound services, you change a person, you change their mindset, you've changed their family, and essentially, you change the community, and that's the goal of the task force.
What? Me?
Mr. John.
Cromer. Well, everything that my colleague just said, that's who I am. I did 13 years in prison for stealing a pair of gym shoes and a set of bed sheets. I got my first job out of prison two weeks, because Dr. Adams at Hartford Memorial Baptist Church prayed with me over the phone, and he told me that if I got to my job, my first job pressed back on time, that God was going to meet me there. So I got there on time, ladies and gentlemen, and if you Google me, you'll see that God met me there because I placed thousands of people in jobs, including ex-offenders, welfare recipients, and all the alike. You can Google and see what I am doing in the community. Work has to be the central policy behind any attempt to reduce crime, recidivism, unemployment, and homelessness in our city. People need jobs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Eric Williams?
Yes. Could you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. Please explain the goals and development of returning citizens.
Well, I mean, I think it's already been said quite clearly how important it is that we reduce recidivism, that we actually treat people like real people, despite, you know, the system sometimes positing them as something other than real-life human beings. I think one of the most important things to remember is that when you're reintegrating people who've done their time into their community, it involves more than just, you know, a job, as has been mentioned, their wraparound services. And it should be prioritized, taking into account that every time you help somebody get a job, you're not only helping them get a job, but you're also helping their family and their community. So it should be prioritized based on all the benefits to the community, not just to the individual, which are important as well.
Yes, sir.
What the other folk at the table have said is interesting, all right? It's interesting, and at a certain level, it's valuable. The only problem is, it's not deep enough. You know where it starts, where the whole question starts? It starts with the mass incarceration of black folk, young black men especially, okay? This system is designed, as you know, to incarcerate black people, and that is why, that is how the folk that they're talking about get into prison system in the first place. So that if we're going to talk about changing the system, and helping black men especially, we must start with the prevention of black men going into the prison system to begin with. Then you won't have to worry, at least to a certain extent, about them getting out, or what to do with them getting out. Then if they're in the system, helping them rehab starts in the system, in the prison, not after they get out. And the candidates should know this.
We're going to the next question.
I have a rebuttal, please.
We're going to the next question. Which community benefits and proposals do you support?
Who's the...
We're starting with you, Mr. John.
Cromer. Like a bird, Crow.
I'm going to call you John.
You're the boss.
Thank you. So, when asked the question...
Yes, what was that question?
Which community benefits and proposals do you support?
Well, obviously, I support supportive efforts for ex-offenders. I think that is very important. There's so many families in our city, as I'm knocking from door to door. There's a couple of women that told me, "Sir, I'm going to vote for you so you can be around that table for my son when he gets out of prison, because you've been to prison, and you know what it's like to have to check yes in that box on that job application, and you know what it's like to have all those barriers in your way." And for you to have accomplished, all that you have accomplished since you've been home from prison, I think that you're the best choice to help my son when he gets out of prison. So I'm going to support prisoner reentry programs. I'm going to buy, like, a company like America Works that I used to work for, that was a performance-based company. If we did not put ex-offenders to work, we did not get paid, and we came here on a federal grant. The city did not give us any money, the state didn't give us any money, the Wayne County didn't give us any money, but guess what? We were putting all their people to work, from Goodwill Industries, and from Focus Hope, and from Jewish vocational centers, and all those other places, we're sending their people to me to put to work, but they never gave us any funding. Truth be told.
Mr. Rambo?
Rambo.
Which community benefits and proposals do you support?
I assume the questioner is talking about community benefits in terms of what is before the city council now with regard to the investment in large projects in the city of Detroit. I'll make that assumption. Certainly, there should be a community benefits agreement with all large investors here in the city of Detroit. Why? Because in the main, most of them are getting tax dollars. Now, this has come before the city council, and it seems, the city council seems to be lost in terms of developing a community benefits agreement. Clearly, there should be a community benefits agreement for all of the investment here in the city agreement, in the city of Detroit, not just at a high economic level of investment, but at a theoretically low, like $5, or $10, or $15 million. Because the jobs that candidate Cromer is talking about goes across the board, not just for ex-offenders, but also for the unemployed, and for the underemployed.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ayers.
Right, so what we're talking about is the initiative that was put forward by the people, that's the first part of it. And then the second part of it is the other proposal that came from council, so that is, in fact, what we're talking about. I don't think that any person that sits on council, and at this point, I'm only going to speak about me, I do not, do not have anything negative to say about community benefits. I live in a community, so of course I would like to see it. Which one do I support? I supported the people's version, which is why I voted, to make sure that that one went to the election commission. Now, what happened last Friday, we had to come up with something that was to the middle. We couldn't get anything that came to the middle. And so if you're going to give people an option, then we'll put it out there. I believe the Detroiters are smart enough to make informed decisions, to choose which one they want, and we all have to make that responsible vote when we get into the ballot box. So, the people's version, that was the best vote that I've ever taken, and the second vote was to give people an option, and so I stand by that.
Well, as Councilwoman Ayers said, what we're referring to are the community benefit ordinances that were before city council. There were actually three, a third one by city council president Brenda Jones. That was actually withdrawn, which was essentially a compromise version. If I had to pick one that I would support, it would be the one that was put together by the people, including the Sugar Law Center. My concern with them is that the only reason they're necessary is because people don't, not because people don't trust city council or the mayor to actually negotiate them. The concern is that they don't trust them to enforce them. They don't, and so any proposal that doesn't give the people the right, the standing to actually pursue it themselves, doesn't really solve what the actual problem is.
Okay, we're going to move to the next question. We're going to go to Mr. Williams. What characteristics do you feel city council members should have?
Do you mean sort of personally? Do you mean in their...
I mean, in any way you want to answer it, sir.
All right, so I think one of the characteristics one should expect from a city councilperson is, one, a commitment to transparency and their role on council, which includes not only legislating, but also includes, when necessary, investigating things that are happening in city government. For example, it has the right, city council has the right to subpoena and to investigate something that actually really hasn't been happening. They should have, while the city council should actually be cooperating with the mayor, they should also have an independent vision of their own, which in theory should be more in touch with what the people want. And I think a commitment to that as well are sort of the most important things from council, as well as actually some expertise in the issues that matter to the city.
Absolutely. So, what I've learned in the last year and a half of being a person that's on council is that oftentimes, what we think is not reality. You have to be willing to be one with people, you have to be willing to listen, you have to have the ability to connect, you have to have the ability to be pragmatic, you have to have the ability to just walk in your truth of who you are, because that's what matters. When you go out, you're talking to people, and you have to let the people's issues and their concerns resonate with you. You have to be able to build bridges, because that's exactly what it takes to get things passed. And to Mr. Williams' point, he's absolutely right. People should be transparent, and people should be held accountable. I do want to say that as far as council and our responsibilities go, we have done private investigations, and we are utilizing those things now. What you haven't seen is the result of them, because they're still going on. So, I will say for myself that I'm well-versed in the charter and what my charter responsibilities are, and for that, that's another thing, you have to be thoughtful.
I get it, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You know what the key important, the most important character need for city council or for elected officials is? The most important one is the lack of ego, absence of ego. Problem I've found with elected officials generally, and city councils specifically, is that they get overcome with their own... is that they get overcome with their own self-importance. Once they get elected and onto the seat, they think it's about them. I mean, and this is repeated over and over again. They enjoy the, the adulation that they get from people, and they begin to think that, that what they think or their vision is the central point, okay? And that, and that is probably the deepest struggle that they have, is to maintain control over their own egos. And then after that, the character they should have is that of the student. They should be willing to study, because if anything that you find in elected officials is that they are fairly ignorant. They, they just don't, they won't do enough study.
Ego is erasing God out of the equation. That's what ego is, erasing God out and trying to become the God of our city and not listen to the people. You have to listen to the people and be able to compile their concerns and their thoughts and their issues in order to take them to the higher level. When I was in prison, for instance, the other prisoners used to always seek after me to be the block rep, because I'm able to listen to people. The block rep is the person that takes the, the issues to the warden and sits on the warden's form and complains to the warden about our living conditions or our amenities that we may be, the treatment or what have you. These are the issues that I used to collect. But someone that also has the ability to get things done, and again, if you go to Google or YouTube, you'll see that I get things done. The candidate has to be able to relate to the people that they're serving. You have to have some type of experience that they're going through for you to be compassionate about your situation. Thank you.
Would you support an entertainment tax in greater downtown to support youth and community benefits?
That's a very spot-on question, because within the first three months of me being on council, I actually researched doing an entertainment tax. And what I wanted to do was to take that money and allow it to go towards the pensions. But entertainment tax and any other taxation, we have to take that up with the state. So, it is something that's in the works now to develop a new entertainment tax that we can put it on the tickets so that we can have it either go, which I do like the idea of having to go to youth, so then we can open up some of these rec centers, or have it go into the pensions. So I can give you an update as that rolls out.
You know, I, I don't think it should be accurately called a tax. I think it should be called a surcharge, actually a surcharge, an added charge on, on, on tickets, so that, you know, as a writer, I, I think you should, you should research and use words correctly. I, I think a tax is used across the board for everybody, whereas a surcharge is leveled in specific instances. So that, yes, qualified that, yes, I think that there could be a surcharge on, on tickets at certain venues. I think it would be a mistake to, to put a surcharge on, on tickets, for example, of, of community residents here in the city under a certain level of, of, of the charge on the ticket, because poor artists can't, can't, don't afford, can't afford a surcharge. In addition, they have a hard enough time getting people to come, and they have no budget anyway.
Well, I would certainly have to look at the, the tax. Again, if, if we don't control the tax issue, then it's something I would look at and read and try to communicate with my colleagues in Lansing and try to get some things, some relief for the residents. How is this thing gonna benefit the residents is what I wanna find out, first of all? Because I'm sick and tired of our city council selling us empty dreams, you know? Like, for instance, they do have these task forces meeting some different groups down there, but no jobs ever materialize out of them. And if no jobs materialize out of these task forces, then all you're doing is meeting every month. And Coleman Young told my daddy, when I was a little boy, I heard Coleman Young tell my daddy, that when people don't wanna work, oh, they'll call a meeting.
Well, whether it's, whether it's actually implemented as a tax or a surcharge, the truth is, the city has to, literally has to examine any potential way of generating revenue at this point. One of the advantages of a properly targeted revenue generating approach on, on entertainment would be that you could actually target it toward, for example, people coming into the city who don't, aren't normally paying for city services, but they're receiving them in the form of police and, you know, security and lights and all that. So it actually would be that. What you'd want to avoid is something that either hinders the, that, that, you know, sort of acts to, to, to put us, to put the brakes on, you know, on more community-based kind of activities as opposed to something that targets, say, larger performance venues. So that would be what you'd wanna consider. But I certainly think that Detroit should consider every possible means for raising revenue at this juncture.
No, it's not possible. It's not possible. Nor is it particularly important, and you
have to understand why. Look at the city of Detroit. It's 139 square miles, okay? There are 80,000 houses or buildings within the city of Detroit that need to be demolished, alright? Detroit at one time had 1.85 million people. Now there's 680,000 people. So there's plenty of space available for folk to move in or move out, alright? Our problem is not having people with money coming in. Our problem is the lack of, of money and resources for the poor people who already live here. So that gentrification is a false issue, essentially, alright? It is an issue to confuse people, because Detroit is a huge city with plenty of space. Then as a racial issue, you have to realize, historically, this city was predominantly white, alright? So that if more white folk move in, it is not a problem.
Thank you. Mr. Rambo, you, you touched on something that I think is particularly important. I think we have to get our mindset outside of this, this gentrification. What it is, is that a lot of people feel like they're left behind. And the reality is that, yes, and that is because people don't have access to whether it's reliable transit to get from your neighborhood to downtown, if it's, you're unaware of programs that are out there. We have to do better as a governing body and as people that are just in the know, getting that information out to individuals, so that people don't feel like they don't have access. So if you don't have access to the amenities that are in downtown, and when you don't have economic opportunity, you always feel like you're left behind. And that is what we're trying to change through the Workforce Development Board, what we're trying to change through the task force, and what we're trying to change in every community meeting that I have, giving people the knowledge so that they have access and then they have the opportunity.
Hello, Mr. Williams? Yeah, I, I had the, the pleasure, so to speak, of living in New York, as certain areas actually gentrified there. I, I think that is something that we actually can and should attempt to slow down. If you're going to define gentrification as moving one population out of an area, replacing them with a different population, and that area suddenly starts receiving services and access to amenities that the prior, that the prior population didn't enjoy while they lived there. That's where there's a problem. Gentrification wouldn't be an issue, gentrification wouldn't be an issue if the same sort of things you saw in midtown and downtown were available to people living outside of that area. So while you always expect the core of the city to be more vibrant in a lot of ways, the way to do it is to make sure that a lot of those things that make living in downtown, like security, lighting, transportation, available outside of the core of the city, then gentrification won't really be an issue. People will be happy where they are, because then they're being, receiving what a city is supposed to provide them.
It is that issue that is calling for this community investment agreement, so that they're working on, that I haven't really thoroughly investigated myself. But I believe that if you are going to add, like, for instance, this tax issue, then it's going to exclude this population that my colleague Eric Williams just talked about. Certain people are gonna benefit and some people are not. When one of the colleagues talked about the police protecting or adding more police to the downtown area, some people will benefit from that. Well, how would that affect the neighborhoods? What I plan to do is present Mayor Duggan, if he's the mayor at that time, an executive order to present to the contractors of our city that says that they're gonna hire 10% of their staff is going to be ex-offenders that live in our city, just like they had the executive order that says 51% for large projects have to be Detroit residents. We're gonna go a step beyond that, because these companies are getting rich off of our city, and if they're gonna get rich off our city, they should be helping us with our social issues.
Jobs, J-O-B. Again, there are contractors getting all of our money and getting rich off of our city while Pookie and Ray Ray are rotting in your basement and in your attic, and to get arrested again for you to send him another money order to survive in jail or prison. We must determine when the punishment stops, and it's gonna stop on August 3rd. It's gonna be halfway there. November 8th is really gonna stop when I become your city council member.
That's a very interesting and complicated question in terms of what the city needs most. It depends on where you're at. If you're unemployed, you need a job. Then that's the most important thing for the city, if, or, or the resident in the city. If you don't have hospitalization, then you need a, a medical plan, like Obama got, for 20 million people, but 30 million people still don't have a plan. So if you're uneducated, then you need to either get a scholarship to college or a better school. It depends on where you are and where, your resources. So in, in this city, a city of the haves and the have-nots, the haves don't need anything. The have-nots need virtually everything. So they can, or you can, or we can, talk about any issue that is lacking for the haves or the have-nots. And that's what, as a have-not, you'll need the most.
Thank you. There are quite a few things that I could say that the city needs. Over the last year and a half, knocking over 20,000 doors gave me an opportunity to hear what it is that people wanted. And it was not better schools, that wasn't number one thing. The number one thing that I heard was about public safety. And so we moved from public safety, because if you don't feel safe somewhere, you're not gonna be, you're not gonna stay. So it's that, and then there is the job piece that is at the forefront of anything, because that determines your ability to have access and your ability to have economic opportunities. So between jobs and public safety, those are the two things that I've been focused on over the last year and a half, to make sure that that is what people are getting here in the city of Detroit. Opportunity is number one.
Actually, his answer actually is, is, is very good, because it emphasizes the fact that there are, there's a definite division between haves and have-nots. But I think probably what Detroit needs the most is a commitment to, and the resources to actually function as a government, right, to provide the services that government is supposed to provide people, everything from, you know, public infrastructure to, you know, education to transportation. I mean, all these things have actually, the city actually doesn't provide to, to a normal standard in any part of the city, really. So what the city, and in order to provide those things, we need, one, resources, and, two, we need a commitment to do it all across the city, and to actually take up the reins of government, not to pretend that everything can be done by a public-private partnership.
Our next question is to Mr. Rambo. What community organizations are you associated with?
Number one, I'm associated with Project Bait, titled Black Awareness and Television. We produce the program For My People that comes on weekly on Channel 50. With the Saturday Irregulars, we meet over at Tim Horton's right across the street from Bell Out. We meet weekly from Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00. And with the Concept East Institutes, we produce 23 websites on Facebook, and if you have a smartphone, you can go there now. But let me also digress a little bit to talk for 30 seconds about a point that is crucial, that, you know, you, you probably don't hear this in, in meetings, and council people don't talk about it. No, no offense, alright? By me, not just this young lady, but council people in general. We have a strong mayor, weak council government, okay? The mayor essentially runs things. So what is most important for the council to do is advocate and struggle with the people to make change.
So at, at this point, I, I think you all are aware that I'm the only council person that has four committees, and so my time is limited, so I had to cut down a bit. But I am actively involved with my church, Greater Quinn A&amp;E. I am a mentor to young girls with a program called The Fly Girls, and I am also a member of the Order of the Eastern Star. And so between all the other things going on in the day-to-day, and along with the campaign, those are the things that I'm most active in at this point.
Well, a lot of what I do is, is related to professional stuff. I'm a member of the Board for People for Palmer Park. I'm also a board member for Pony Ride, which is a light manufacturing incubator. I serve on the Executive Committee for the Institute for Continuing Legal Education, Institute for Continuing Legal Education. I'm also a part of BME, which once upon a time stood for blackmail engagement, which does a lot of tutoring and outreach to young men. But right now, we've changed what it means, and it's mostly just for be me. I am also a member of the Wolverine Bar, the American Bar Association. I'm faculty advisor for the Black Law Student Association at Wayne State University Law School. I'm also a faculty advisor for the Muslim Law Student Association.
Well, I tutor at St. Peter Home for Boys. I mentor about 60 young men. We ain't got none of that CP stuff going on in our camp, where we practice manhood, and we stay on a straight and narrow. I am the founder of Detroit Impacts Youth Summer Rally. Every year, I give about 200 to 300 kids backpacks, school supplies, and school uniforms. This year, I'll be doing it on August 19th. At Christmas time, I created a program called Toys Make an Impact. Some people call it TMI, Too Much Information, that's okay. But IMPACT is an acronym that stands for Intelligent, Motivated, Positive Attitudes, Changing the Statistics. And I give about 600 kids three toys apiece. Some of the same companies that I used to shoplift from now give me tens and thousands of dollars to give back to the community in ways of the outreach community programs that I sponsor. You can Google that, too.
Thank you. We'll move to our next question. Ms. Ayers, how would your management skills and leadership skills improve the financial issues that plague the neighborhood?
It plagued the what?
Plagued the neighborhood.
Okay, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, one more time.
Okay. How will the, how will your management skill and leadership skill improve the financial issues that plague the neighborhood?
So what, I can tell you what we're doing now. I am vice chair of the Budget Committee. So I know how our money is moving and how our money is working, but that's not even the important part. The important part about this and that question is what are we doing to drive development? What are we doing to drive that dollar to matriculate throughout our communities? And so what we're doing now, which you all will start to see come September, is interest these folks that wanna do development, whether it's downtown, midtown, to partner. And I do have a guy that's doing something now. He's, has a development that'll be coming on West Grand Boulevard, but it is also now going to be a development you'll see happen in the Grand River Corridor. So we have to create creative opportunities for people. This is how we get that momentum to get into our communities. Those buildings have been sitting vacant forever. So let's get bodies in there, let's get people to work. That's how we manage that dollar inside of our neighborhoods.
Okay. So when it, when it comes to neighborhoods, one of the most important things that, that we really need is to be able to support neighborhood initiatives that are sort of ongoing. If you look out there right now, one of the things you'll see is that the strongest neighborhoods, the ones that are dealing the best with issues from blight to crime to, you know, too many leased properties or rental properties and what is otherwise, you know, a solidly home-owning kind of neighborhood, they have strong block clubs and they have strong community organizations. So one of the things that we really need to do is make sure that we not only help, help neighborhoods organize, but we also help those organizations communicate with each other, which means everything from sharing best practices to allowing them to share, organize the resources that they do have, whether we're talking vehicles or manpower or other kinds of expertise. And that's something that the city can and should do, because we have this thing called the internet. So it actually shouldn't be that difficult to allow them to communicate with each other. There's something that works in Brightmore, it might work in Winthrop or something. There you go.
First, would, would you ask the question again, so we refresh the audience and me?
How will, how will your management skill and leadership skill improve the financial issues that plague the neighborhood?
All right. One of the key problems that the neighborhood, people in the neighborhoods, what you have, what I have, is we don't know financially what's going on at City Hall. Council really doesn't, in my experience at the Detroit City Council, council really doesn't get a hold of what's happening with the money that the city does or handles and turn it over to the people. You don't really know what's going on financially at the city. So I suggest that it is most important, in terms of the, what has been offered as transparency, for the city council doing what it can do, that is get the city budget, the billions of dollars that the city spends every year, and turn the economic information over to the people to make sure that they get it. Then as they get it, they can do better. People can do better, the leaders in the community, in terms of telling the city council what should be done financially.
Well, in my experience, as I've been able to, again, develop relationships with over 20,000 businesses, I have a Rolodex with all their cards and a phobetical order. And these are some of my employers that help put people to work. So I would be able to use some of those management skills to do neighborhood employment fairs. You'll have to keep in mind, even though the city council won't tell us the real, of what's going on, we don't have a workforce development department anymore. There is none. They gave it away. It's a nonprofit organization now. So it's called Detroit Employment Solutions Corporation. It's a nonprofit that is, it is not the workforce development department that it used to be. Let's put it like that. So what I would certainly like to do is have investors come into the city, like the Mammoth Building, for instance. I'm a retailer that says, when I become a city council member, they're going to move into the Mammoth Building and bring a couple hundred jobs right there on that corner. Because these are the type of relationships that I'm able to build with companies, with retailers, with investors. I managed the corner of Grand Burger and Greenfield for five years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question would be directed to Mr. Eric Williams. How knowledgeable are you on the city code?
There's a whole bunch of them. I mean, I mean, some I know well, some, some not so well. But as a lawyer, the one thing I'll say is, even if I thought I knew them very well, I would look them up before I ever said anything about any of them because they change. So, I mean, I'm, I clearly... Pardon? Three, um, three what? Three ordinances? I mean, most of what city council, a lot of what city council does relates to zoning. So the most recent ordinance we'd have to talk about would be the one affecting, affecting marijuana dispensaries. There's also the ordinance, ordinances that are related to, I mean, there's permitting, there's zoning. The most, of course, the most recent one being, of course, city council's currently considering community benefits ordinance. Like I said, I'm not quite sure exactly what the question is headed toward.
All right. So to Mr. Williams' point, they, there are thousands of codes and there are thousands of ordinances. And so no one person will ever be well-versed on any of them. What I can tell you to this point, the most recent one, and I want to clear that a city council is not considering a community benefits ordinance that has already gone to the Election Commission. So that part is not an ordinance. It's a, it's an initiative now. But within the last three weeks, I just finished a ordinance that addresses the blight and blight code violations that allow for commercial residential property owners that have been taken it and have not mitigated their problems. They will not be able to acquire any new property until they fix that one. So that's one. The medical marijuana, that is a great one. When we talk about zoning and we talk about business licenses and those permits. And then the other one that I will offer to you is, most recent, is about the noise ordinance. And so that's another code enforcement violation ordinance that's out there. So those would, those would be three, just on the top.
Oh, uh, oh, yeah. Thank you. Did you answer that question already, brother? Okay, good, because I have to take off. But let me just say this. I spearheaded the ordinance that requires the city and all of its contractors to take the criminal record question on some of the job applications to give people a second chance. I know about that ordinance because I spearheaded it and I watched other organizations and groups come behind me and give testimony and supported that ordinance to push it all the way over. It became effective on July 1st, 2012. I also know that there's an ordinance. There are also text credit programs. There's a neighborhood block opportunity grant funds that go through the city council to help neighborhoods and small businesses do different type of projects in the community. I'm aware of those type of grants. But as my colleague stated, there's so many. It's like, one, two, the library. You got to look it up and read it and get your, refresh your memory on it. So thank you all for this time. I have another appointment. I want to thank you all for this. And I hope that you all will give me consideration on August 2nd. And God bless you all. Thank you.
I don't know a single ordinance. I don't know one, all right? Don't know a single one. It's not important. Really not important. It's like the fellow said, if you want to know an ordinance, you go to the library, look it up, read it. You can't know thousands of ordinances. You could if that was important. That would be all you'd be doing as a city council person, is going over the ordinances. And it's kind of interesting when they said it would, you'd look it in the library. You know, the city council used to have a, a library. It used to be a public library in City Hall. I think it's closed. So you can look up personally any ordinance online. But the key thing is having background in terms, in terms of discussing the issue because most of them, firstly, all of them don't get to be ordinances, all right? So you don't need to memorize every ordinance. But, but you need to be able to research and intelligently approach, given your intellectual background, any political perspective that is necessary to be discussed.
Thank you very much. We will end this segment with the candidates closing statements that will not exceed two minutes, please. And we will start with you, Ms. Ayers.
Ladies first? Good.
Okay. Well, thank you. This has been a very wonderful and insightful evening. So I would like to thank the League for hosting such a good event. It's good to come to forums that actually have some organization, and I appreciate that. More than anything, this has been a pleasure to serve you all for the last year and a half. I am a person that is dedicated. I'm a person that is thoughtful. And I'm a person that didn't come into this with a title, with a family name, with, with none of that. I just came here being Janay. Janay that has worked three jobs to make ends meet. And that's who I am. And that's the type of realism and pragmatism I bring to the table every day. I do everyday legislation. And so because of that, I would encourage you to, outside of this, look up all of us. Still see if what we stand for aligns with what you believe in. And I would request for your, your support and your vote out on August 2nd. And either way, I want you to be informed. That's the most important part. So thank you.
Yes, I, I too wish to thank the League for holding this event. I wish more of the seats were filled. But as I always say, it's the people who come as opposed to those who aren't here. I want to thank the library for making this space available. The library is, is one of the most important institutions in our community. I, I certainly hope you will check out my program For My People on Channel 50, Saturday mornings at 6:30 a.m. And check out our website, Concept East Institute on Facebook dot com. We have 23 of them. And if you have an issue that you think is important after you check out our sites, just send us an email. We'll look it over and as editor, I'll see if I can publish it on our sites. Other than that, thank you for being an attentive and intelligent audience. And I do hope you'll take a short march to register to vote. And then on Tuesday, take another short march and go and vote. As Ted Cruz said, vote your conscience. Oh, and I'm going to write in, David Rambo. You have to write my name in and then put the little marks in the box. I'm not a, on the list of candidates like my colleagues, but I do hope you'll consider voting for me like you did for your mayor. Thank you very much.
So I, I definitely want to thank the League. It's a, it's a pleasure to actually have, have an opportunity to discuss real issues in a more substantive manner. I do apologize for being late, but I really do appreciate the opportunity to be back on this stage. The last time I was on this stage was 1980, when I played Travis in a production of The Raisin, of A Raisin in the Sun with the Wayne State Black Theater Touring Company. So it's a, it's good being back. Detroit's really at a crossroads right now. We've got a lot of development going on. There's tons of opportunities. The problem is that, to me, people feel as though what's happening isn't really transparent, that it's not happening in a way that's equitable. And that in a few years, Detroit is going to look like a lot of other cities where you have a very, you have a very small area, typically the city core, where you have all the services and amenities that you expect from a functioning city, but the outlying areas are neglected. And I think those fears are well-founded, actually. I think what we have right now is a position where the city is too reliant on the support of large corporations, large developers. And so we find ourselves in a position where it's not the vision of development that's in, taking place in Detroit right now. The vision of development is not that of the people. It's actually not geared toward the people. And we're going to need an independent vision and somebody willing to stand up for that vision to actually prevent the worst-case scenario, which is simply Detroit turning into, believe it or not, Chicago, where there's chaos out in the neighborhoods, but everybody would love to be downtown. And that's not what we want. And I think that if you vote for me on August 2nd, we can begin changing all that. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we wish to thank the Detroit Public Library for use of its wonderful facility. We also would like to thank all of our elected or aspiring potential elected officials, our form candidates here. We also want to thank the citizens of the city of Detroit for coming out and for supporting our events. We want to remind you that the primary is Tuesday, August 2nd. The polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. If you need to verify your voter registration or polling location, please visit your city clerk. You can also go to vote411.org to get information on elected candidates. We do have bookmarks that are available in the back of the room to give you reminder information on our website so that you can get the most up-to-date information on candidates and be an educated voter. So we definitely appreciate your attendance. We do have a forum tomorrow night for the judicial candidates, so those running for 36th District Court and those running for Third District Circuit Court will be here to share their views and what they can do and offer the citizens of Wayne County. So thank you for coming and good night.